Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us for the second of two TDSB Virtual Budget Town Hall meetings. Before we get underway, I'd like to read our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge we are hosted on the lands of the Mississaugas, of the Anishinaabe, the Haudenosaunee Confederacy, and the Wendat. We also recognize the enduring presence of all First Nations, Métis, and Inuit peoples. Thank you again for joining us this afternoon. We are today joined by Associate Director Stacy Zooker and Executive Officer of Finance Craig Snyder, who will be taking us through the budget this afternoon. They'll be touching on a number of different areas, including Ministry of Education regulations, the timelines associated with the budget, our operating deficit, grants for student needs, which is the funding that we receive from the Ministry of Education as a school board, expenditures from the board, and then potential areas of focus as we continue through the budget to address our current deficit. And then finally, we'll be able to take your questions, which you can enter into the Q and A feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen. We'll try to get to as many questions as possible. And if you have very specific school questions, those are really best addressed to your school specifically, but if there are more system-related questions, we'll be happy to obviously answer as many of those as we can. With that, I will now throw it over to Associate Director Stacy Zooker, who will kick us off for our budget presentation. Stacy?
Thank you, Ryan, and welcome, everybody. Good afternoon. So the first thing that I'm going to talk about is the requirements for us to balance the budget. So we're talking right now about the 2024-25 budget. It starts in September of next year, so September 2024, and it goes to August 31st, 2025. So it's our next school year that we're talking about right now. We do have a requirement under the Education Act to submit a balanced budget. And by balanced budget, we usually mean zero deficit, zero surplus. And so there is a requirement to submit that balanced budget. Under the regulation, however, we can have up to a 1% deficit, but it cannot go beyond our reserve balance. So what we have in our bank, basically, that's your savings account for you as a person. We can't spend, each year, we can spend more than we have, but we can't go into overdraft, per se. So with that, when we look at our reserve balances for next year, the most concrete number that we have would have been when we had our statements audited at last year. So on the balance at August 31st, 2023, we're looking at $29.1 million in accumulated surplus. But then when we take into account the deficit for the current year, the year that we're in right now, at the end of August of this year, we expect to have a $13.8 million surplus. So obviously, that's less than the 1% that we have. So we would only be able to spend $13.8 million before we would go into a deficit overall, so an accumulated deficit. And also, the challenge with that is when you look at what makes up that $13.8 million, you'll see that the majority of it, 9.7 million, is actually our school budget carryforwards. So when we use the school budget carryforward number, we're borrowing basically from most school budgets that are being carried forward in order to cover that deficit. So as you can see, we are in a position where it becomes more and more important to have a balanced budget, because we did have a savings, an accumulated surplus, but over the years, as we have annual deficits, we have used that savings up. And we are at the point now where we do not have any more savings available. And so if we go to the next slide, you'll see that actually the third part of this equation is, in 2023, we actually had a budget deficit of 1.4%. So you remember I said you could only have up to a 1% deficit? When you go over 1%, you need permission from the ministry in order to incur that deficit. And then you have to provide a three-year deficit recovery plan. So 2024-25, next year, is the third year of that three-year plan. And that plan did commit us $8.2 million surplus, because again, we had been borrowing from our other reserves in order to incur the deficits on an annual basis. So what we're working towards this year, and I gave you three numbers, basically, was zero. So a balanced budget, there was a $13.8 million in reserves that we could, if we didn't have this commitment, use up. And then the plan that committed us to $8.2 million. We are working towards a balanced budget for this year, meaning that we would submit a budget that would have zero surplus, zero deficit. We are also approving the budget before the release of the GSN. So we have had to make certain assumptions related to the grants, and we'll get more into that a little bit later. But our board believes that this will allow us to make decisions that are based on student needs. So when we make assumptions with regards to the grants, as you'll see in our financial position, there are things that are out of our control that are contributing to a structural deficit. So we will have to make assumptions as to whether or not we would expect to receive any funding related to those areas. So in order to pass this operating budget prior to the release of the GSN, we would be looking at a budget, it's a pretty tight budget schedule, and so just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of that schedule. So on February 14th, we did have our regular Finance Budget and Enrollment Committee meeting, or FBEC meeting, as we'll refer to it. And that FBEC meeting, we looked at the potential areas of focus, and we'll refer to those a little bit later. Yesterday, and then today, we are doing webinars, and there will be a budget survey that's shared for you to provide additional feedback. There is a special FBEC meeting for school-based staffing, so that's when we approve our school-based staffing. And we do it at that time every year, because we have collective agreement timelines that we have to meet. We also have to give our principals and administrators time in order to be able to set up their classrooms for next year with regards to staffing. And then on March 19th, that will be where you will be provided with detailed options to balance. So how do we get to a balanced budget? What reductions are we looking at? Is there anything that we're adding to the budget that increases that deficit even further? That means we have to make more reductions. On March 26th, we have set aside an evening for delegations related to the operating budget. So if you are on this call and you are looking to delegate with regards to the budget, that night will be set aside. And then March 27th is when we will bring the recommendation for the board, or recommendation to FBEC to bring to the board on April 2nd for the approval of the budget. If we look at our financial position, and I referred to this earlier, we have a structural deficit right now, and what that means is that we spend more each year than we receive in funding. So if you think of it again personally, it means that you have a salary of, say, $100,000, and you're spending more than $100,000 every year. One year, two years, it might not matter. You know, you may have some savings in your bank account that can allow you to spend more. But when you have a structural deficit, or when you're spending more every year, eventually, you won't have any money left in your savings account, and you won't be able to continue to incur that structural deficit. And as I referred to earlier, that's where we are right now. So there are some areas, as I mentioned, where the structural deficit is not within our control. That includes statutory benefits. We see that on our own paychecks, that the rates have been increasing over the last six years. There's also an employer portion, and that employer portion is increasing the same way. So we are incurring those increases, and there has not been a corresponding increase in funding. So for us, we know that it makes a difference when you have over 40,000 employees. It makes a significant difference, and we'll see that cumulative total later in this presentation. We also have replacement costs for absences. So when somebody is off on sick leave or leave, and we have to bring in a supply teacher, for example, those costs have continued to increase since the change in the central agreements related to sick leave. So once that changed, the number of sick days have continued to increase, and obviously have increased through COVID as well. And so there are replacement costs that have not, again, had a corresponding increase in grant revenue. Also, we have right now a moratorium on school closures. That means that we're not able to close any schools. And we know that we have schools with low enrollments, and so we have excess capacity across the board. And we are not able to deal with that excess capacity. And what that means is that we have operating costs associated with those schools, so we have more schools than we need. So we have more operating costs than we would expect, and it also impacts our renewal and maintenance costs. So those are the things that we can't control. We also have things that, based on past practices, or priorities that the board has, like in accordance with the draft of our multi-year strategic plan, we have things where we spend more money than we receive funding for. And some of them, and this is not an exhaustive list by far, but they include special education, continuing education, outdoor education, pools, lunchroom supervision, nutrition, and school-based safety monitors, for example. So those are all areas where the board has chosen to spend more than it has in funding. And if you want further information, there's, last year's version of our financial facts document is available online, and that will be updated and presented to trustees at the March 4th FBEC meeting. So on January 29th, based on all the assumptions that we had, using assumptions that related to grant revenue, and looking at all of the expenses that we will incur, and any increases that we know that are going to happen, or decreases, any changes, we are projecting right now a $34.8 million. This $34.8 million includes the continuation for one more year of the use of proceeds of disposition. And if the ministry does not approve that use, then the deficit would increase to $50.6 million. So I'm going to turn it over to Executive Officer Craig Snyder, and he's going to walk us through some of the details of our revenue and expenditures. Thank you.
Thank you, Stacy. And I'd just like to start this afternoon talking about the grant for student needs, or as we refer to it occasionally as the GSN. So the majority of our funding and revenue comes through the GSN. And the GSN predominantly is dependent on enrollment. There are some set table amounts, but the majority is by enrollment. And each year, the ministry releases the GSNs either in late March or early April. We're expecting them sometime in mid-April to the end of April this year. And our current projection based on this year's funding model is that the GSN will account for about $3.1 billion of our revenue for 24-25. So this is a breakdown of the GSN, and I won't go through all the components, but you can see the vast majority is the people foundation allocation. And that is for our teachers in the classroom, our ECEs, our computer supplies, and other paraprofessional supports in the classroom. You can see the school foundation allocation at the bottom piece for 6%, and that's our principals, vice principals, the school office staff. And then you see special ed, languages, learning opportunity, and transportation, and other various grants. But that just kind of gives you a breakdown for what the grants are made up of. So the assumptions that we did in building this budget for 24-25 was we looked at the enrollment increases that our planning departments projecting. And in elementary, they're projecting 324 average daily enrollment increases students. So that's where we take the October, March counts and divide by two to get to the average that we're funded on. So we're expecting about 324 more elementary students next year, and just shy of 1,100 in secondary. And you see in our projected enrollments for English and selected language that our newcomers are increasing significantly by 4,000 students in elementary and just shy of 2,000 in secondary. So this means that we're seeing the regular enrollments have declined, but because of the newcomers coming, and we're seeing overall growth in the enrollment. We have left one of the other assumptions, as we talked about a moment ago. We are using the 23-24 GSNs. We're using all those benchmarks to remain the same in 24-25 at this point in time. Another source of funding for school boards is what's called priority and partnership funding. And this is a supplement to the grants for student needs, that's time-limited funding for the ministry education, and it's reviewed by them manually, and is applied for specific programs they would like to see school boards implement, whether it be literacy, or tutors in the classroom, or things like that. But they are defined, and we have an agreement we signed with the ministry that will spend the funds in the designated method. The last piece is our other revenues. And this accounts for 10% of our funding, our funding that supports the board operations. And while this is not an extensive list, this is the major components. So obviously, permit revenue, when we lease out gyms and classrooms in the evening or on weekends, our lease revenue from closed sites, whether it be to another school or another organization that leases property from us, interest income, and this again is dependent on what the economic status in Canada is, and what rates set by the Bank of Canada, and we're watching that closely. And then we have international students that come on visas to Canada, and they pay a fee to us. These revenue sources and the other ones that aren't mentioned here did drop significantly during COVID, and they're starting to see a rebound in those to pre-pandemic levels. They aren't completely there yet, but they are starting to rebound. So I'd like to get a moment now and explain our expenditures. So in our expenditures, we spent about $3.7 billion in our expenditures, and it's in four major categories to break down. There's instructional expenditure, so that's the classroom, that's all the staff that support students in the classroom, whether it be teachers, CYWs, lunchroom supervisors, safety monitors, the ECEs, and the instructional supplies for the schools and their technology. Then we have our building operations and renewal, which is about 21%, and that is our caretaking, maintenance, utilities, and major building renewals in the buildings. We spent about 2% on transportation for home-to-school for our students, and our administration, which is our finance department, our employee services department, our facilities department, and other central staff that support schools and provide the support they need so they can deliver education programs, about 2.5%. So here's a breakdown of the salaries and benefits and the other expenses in the ministry categories. And the important note here is when you take the employee salaries and benefits together, it's about 84% of our budget is spent on salaries and benefits for all staff, whether they be school-based or central. Our salaries and wages are the largest portion of our budget. As enrollment increases, the number of teachers will increase to meet the class size regulations that we have. And similarly, if the class sizes decrease, the number of teachers may decrease as well. Salary increases have been provided based on collective agreements that are negotiated between the province and the respective unions and associations. We are seeing a budget pressure. This chart below kind of outlines the budget pressure we've seen over the last six years. And the ministry hasn't kept pace with the increase in benefits. So you can see a long-term disability, we've got about $14 million. Workers' compensation, WSIB, has gone down. And this is kind of due to the pandemic. When people were working from home, we didn't see as much WSIB claims. This number is starting to rise as we return to school and to our offices. CCP and EI are accounting for about $35 billion in costs. And again, this has been unfunded increases the boards had to bear over the last six years. So replacement costs for employees' absence, there's no anticipated increase in the GSN for replacement costs associated with school-based staff and occasional staff. We are seeing, based on the 24-25 budget, that we have to increase it by 8.5 billion to keep pace with what we're seeing in the absenteeism. And over the period since 1819, our supply costs for school-based staff have gone up by about $13.5 billion. And that speaks to what Stacy talked about earlier, about absenteeism and pressure on the board. In transportation, we work with Toronto Catholic School Board in a collaborative that's called the Toronto Student Transportation Group. And we went out for competitive bids for next year, because starting September 1st of '24, we're under a new contract cycle, the old one ends at the end of August this year. And we're expecting an increase in our transportation costs of approximately 16% or about $5 million. Other expenses. So all the other expenses, supplies and services and contracts for our firewalls, for example, or our software, we're seeing continued increase year over year due to inflation. And while those increases have gone, have been rather severe the last few years, the grant has not kept pace with the cost of inflation that TDSB and other school boards are experiencing. So I'll turn it back to Stacy now. She'll take you through the potential areas of focus that we're looking at to balance the 24-25 budget.
Thank you, Craig. And so again, as we said earlier, there is a projected deficit currently of $34.8 million. And so in order to achieve a balanced budget, we would have to reduce our expenditures by $34.8 million. And so when we're doing that right now, we're looking at our potential areas that we will focus on making reductions in order to balance the budget. And so again, right now, these are potential areas of focus. We will, and would like to hear feedback related to these areas. And we will be presenting all of our options to balance, so where we land with regards to these areas on March 19th. So the first area that we'll talk about is continuing education. So continuing education includes a lot of different departments across the board. It includes programs like international language for elementary and African heritage. It includes any of our community programs, our secondary credit courses like night school and summer school, and includes other summer programs, international adult education, adult English as a second language, and adult day school. So those are all funded through the, either through the grant for student needs, through the continuing education allocation, or there are fees charged, like for our community programs. So currently, the board is overspending by approximately $6.9 million in continuing education. And just for context, there are many boards that break even on their continuing education grant, or even use continuing education to supplement the remainder of the budget. So when we're looking at this, we really are looking at each of these specific areas to see if there are any potential areas that we could focus on to reduce our spending or to increase revenue. And so we will be reviewing the programs and bringing forward recommendations to assist in reducing the deficit again on March 19th. The next area that we're looking at is outdoor education. So our board has recognized the importance of outdoor education, and there's actually a board motion that mandates that all students have equity of access to day and overnight education programs, including that every student in grade five to eight has the opportunity to participate in an overnight program, and that every student in kindergarten to eight has the opportunity to participate in day programs. So historically, the costs associated with operating the outdoor education department have been higher than the revenue that's received. And so for 22-23, this just shows you that we receive in revenue $4.1 million and expenditures of $7.2 million to operate in the facilities and to bring students out to these different facilities. So there's a deficit related to outdoor education of $3.1 million. So again, we will be reviewing outdoor education to bring forward recommendations to assist in reducing the deficit. And important to add is, while still adhering to the board resolution, so it will not reduce, or it will not impact that resolution, anything that we bring forward to trustees as potential areas to focus on. Our next area would be looking at opportunities for other revenue. And Craig did mention that most of our revenue comes from the GSN, and that revenue like permits, interest revenue, international student fees, leases, other fees are areas of about 10% of our revenue. And so we are reviewing each of those areas to ensure that the other revenues are at a minimum covering the costs associated with the programs. So we are collecting revenues for specific programs, and there are costs associated with most of them. And so we just want to ensure that we are at least covering our costs. The other area that we're looking at is central staffing. And I'm sure that if you looked at all of our presentations over the last number of years, you will see that this is an area of focus, and it continues to be an area of focus, because we want to ensure that as many of our resources as possible are directly impacting students in the classroom. That being said, there are, as we continue to review this area, we have made significant reductions in the area of central staffing. And it gets harder and harder to be able to provide the level of service that needs to be provided with those recommendations. But it is good practice, and we will continue to review the central staffing for any possible reductions. We are also, as you heard, our replacement costs for staffing absences continue to increase year over year. And we are looking at ways that we are able to achieve savings in this area. So we're looking at strategies to reduce the budget required for replacement costs. And if we are able to identify strategies, then we will include the savings as part of the options to balance. In addition, as a result of increased costs related to renewal projects, and I think we all know how inflation is impacting our day-to-day lives, the increasing cost of materials is also impacting the board. When we have absenteeism and vacant positions, it also impacts our renewal costs, because sometimes we may have to go to potentially a third party, for example, to do some of the work associated with our renewal projects, especially if they're emergencies. So we have overspent the renewal grant by about $6 million over the last couple of years. And then that $6 million then gets charged to operating. So we're looking at the anticipated projects for 2024-25, so for the next school year, and looking at how we can reduce the costs that are charged to operating. So trying to reduce or eliminate that $6 million that we use in operating to cover renewal costs. And then the last area that we're really looking at, and this casts a wide net, but it really is good practice to look at all areas where we spend more than we are funded for. And again, a lot of the areas that we spend on are an important part of fully implementing the board's priorities. And we know that we have a draft of the next four-year multi-year strategic plan that are out. So many areas that we overspend on actually support those priorities and may not be an area that we would be looking to reduce. It actually may be an area where we're looking to increase spending. That being said, it is good practice for us to review all of these areas. And we know that when we reduce in some of these areas, that it could potentially result in a reduction of services or other impacts. So we take all these reviews very seriously. We obviously want to have as minimum impact as possible on supports that directly support our students. But we know that when we have to find almost $35 million in reductions, and we have been decreasing our budget over the last number of years, this gets harder and harder to do without impacting our services or any other sort of range of impacts that we could have by making reductions in our spending. So with that, I will open for questions or comments. Happy to help you.
Thank you so much, Stacy and Craig. We know that's a lot of information to digest, but it is important to set the context for this year's budget, so you know where we've come from and where we're going. A great resource during the budget process is the TDSB budget website at tdsb.on.ca/budget. You'll find a recording of this virtual town hall meeting on there later on today, along with links to reports going through our Finance Budget and Enrollment Committee throughout the process. You'll also see more information on how you can have You'll also see more information on how you can have your say uh from these virtual town hall meetings, but also how to delegate before the committee. And in the coming days, a budget survey, as mentioned, to gather feedback from our school communities. We'll be updating that website as soon as that's available. With that, we're happy to take any questions you may have. Again, you can type your questions into the Q and A feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Uh, depending on the number of questions, we'll try to get to as many as possible. And with that, I see we already are getting some questions in there. So we'll start off. Um, how does kindergarten combined classes work between junior kindergarten and senior kindergarten? Classes together, are there any budget allocations to avoid that? Uh, Stacy, did you want to take this one? I guess it really comes down to the number of students and the unique, uh, I guess, numbers at that individual school.
Uh, thanks, Ryan. It it does. And it also kindergarten is now full day kindergarten and and we're not necessarily distinguishing between junior and senior kindergarten as a funding source. So from a budget perspective, um, we don't actually try to separate out uh junior kindergarten and senior kindergarten. Um, so I think if there are further questions with regards to that split, then maybe reaching out to your principal uh would be a good idea.
Okay, thank you for that question. Next up, is the Ministry of Education allocating additional budget to the TDSB? So that the decision isn't to have to cut supports for our children in TDSB programming. Uh, this person just saying that they don't understand why the provinces are prioritizing supports uh to school boards post pandemic, when so many children are experiencing different kinds of challenges. Their child, for example, it doesn't seem to be able to access the supports they need. I know this, if it's a case for their child, is there something, uh, you know, is it impacting other children? So uh, you know, Stacy, I think that's something that I know trustees have appealed for following last year's budget uh and before to, you know, maintain that uh covid nineteen era funding, if you will. Uh, but that was kind of one time funding.
Uh, thanks, Ryan. And and um, this is where I think advocacy does help. And I know that um trustees would be, I think, pleased to to help in this or assist in um advocacy with regards to where um we could ask the ministry for additional funding. As staff, we we do work, we do share the concerns, we do share the the challenges that we're having with the the staff at the ministry and and they are fully aware and we do uh as much as we can, again, through this budget process to try to reduce the impact on students. But uh, as you can see, uh each year when we we make reductions uh in order to to get towards a balanced budget, it does get harder and harder not to impact services. So I think that this is where public advocacy and possibly reaching out to your trustee to in order to be able to get sort of assistance with how to advocate would be uh helpful.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, next up, uh regarding costs for substitute uh staff due to absences slash leaves. What are the root causes of these leaves? Has analysis been completed to understand if increasing staffing and supports could reduce leaves and absences? Want to say, like, we looked into it somewhat, but Stacy?
Uh, yeah, thanks, Ryan. And and our people and culture department or human resources support is doing a significant review of the causes. And um again, you know, it's a good question that you've asked and something that they're looking at is some of the the costs that is related to the absences as a result of say workload, for example. And so those are all things that are being explored. And again, it it's hard to provide additional supports um and find that sort of balancing point where we do start to reduce the number of absences, if if that is one of the causes. So it is certainly um something that our people and culture team is reviewing.
Okay, thank you for that question. Uh, next up, this person talks about these special needs supports provided by the TDSB. And in fact, uh, many families wanting to bring their their children to the TDSB because of our special education supports. Um, acknowledges that TSB spends more on special education than the GSN provides. Um, wondering if the ministry should be covering that difference. I I think it's fair to say that we believe the ministry should be, but Stacy, did you want to add to that?
Uh, yeah, just that we we do spend significantly more on special education than we're funded for. Again, it it speaks to the priorities and the level of support that we wanted to provide to our students. And um I I think we do provide um exceptional support there. So it is important to the board. Um, with regards to the ministry funding, I think most boards do overspend on special education. So there is a lot of provincial advocacy that happens to to increase that grant, but uh as well as uh TDSB specifically, it is something that we um constantly as part of the feedback that that trustees provide and that staff provide to um both the the politicians and to staff that um we overspend on special education and that not being able to have additional funding could impact the level of support that we provide.
Thank you for that. Again, we're taking your questions. If you have a question for us, you can enter it into the Q and A feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen. We're moving on to the next one. Uh, someone's asking if the ministry can be taken to court to have them meet their obligations for funding special ed employee benefits, et cetera. Um. That one's beyond uh me and perhaps you, but I I don't, I don't believe that may be a possibility, but uh I think it's something to your point of continued advocacy. Is that fair to say? Okay. Uh, next up, um. If there are projected significant increases in enrollment in ESL or ELL learners in both elementary and secondary, why are adult day schools where the parents of these children attend in order to get their own high school diplomas for entering the workforce a part of the way to balance the budget? Um, they're just talking about these school finances should not be cut. Um, uh, it should not be cut. Stacy, did you want to speak to that one about that was one area that's being looked at?
Yeah, that is one of the areas of continuing education and we are looking at, again, um, to your point, we want to ensure that we are providing uh not doing a disservice to the parents of those children, but we want to ensure that we're also doing it in a cost effective way. So that's just part of the review. It doesn't necessarily mean that there will or won't be reductions in that area. It's one part of um continuing education. And uh, one of the areas that's being being reviewed. So uh, I think just more to come on the nineteenth with regards to where the potential areas that we're looking at.
Perfect. Thank you for that. Uh, next up, um Craig or Stacy, do you have the the special education underfunding projections for this year? So is there a rough ballpark that you might be able to provide when it comes to special education, essentially how much more we're spending than receiving?
Yes, thank you for the question, Ryan. I can take this one. So currently in this year's forecast, we're anticipating about a forty point six million dollar spending in excess of the special envelope that the ministry provides.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, just looking to our list of questions here. Uh, given that the TSB cannot run deficits or surpluses, what is the source of the reserve balance that was discussed at the start of the meeting? Stacy or Craig?
I could take that one. The the TSB is allowed to run surpluses and typically we don't budget for surpluses. But in some years, there's been things where our anticipated costs did not come in as high. So there's in those opportunities, the money set aside to cover what I would call a rainy day fund, but we are allowed to run deficits other than what Stacy said, the beginning of the presentation of up to one percent, as long as you have enough reserves to cover that one percent, which we are in this case uh currently for the twenty four twenty five school year.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, next up, this person is interested in the in interested in the concept of sweatering of provincial grants. Explain how this process works and which funds are sweetered. I don't know if you want to speak to that, but it's essentially money meant for a specific purpose within our budget, but are there are there key ones that we receive that are typically sweetered or does that vary from year to year?
No, they typically stay the same, uh, Ryan. The special education grant, for example, must be spent on special education supports. There are uh loose sweaters, I call them, in the class sizes that we must do under regulation uh or collective agreements. Uh, there's sweatering around uh capital money must be spent on capital, can't be spent on operations. Uh, so there are sweaters like that in the grants about where you have to spend the money uh that are appropriate to the certain identified programs.
Okay, thank you for that. Again, we're taking your questions using the Q and A feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen. This person asks about uh how do you want the public to advocate? Please be specific, write a letter to a specific person. It's, I I'd say, and Stacy, I'll defer to you, but I think it's difficult for us to say you should be emailing this specific person. In general, I think if you have concerns about priorities during the budget, you can share those with your local trustees so that they are aware. If you have a concern with overall funding of the the Toronto District School Board, I I think that would be to the Ministry of Education without getting into really specifics. Is that is that general enough? Does that uh work?
Yeah, I I think that's fair. And I think if on our um budget website, and Ryan, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Um, some of the the letters that our trustees have sent to the ministry with regards to specific advocacy is there as well. So that may help in seeing where those have been um sent. And again, reaching out to your local trustee uh would be, I think, a good start for them to help you to to navigate this as well.
That's great. Thank you for that. Uh, next up, this person has been told that continuing education pays for permits to use TDSB school facilities such as gyms, classrooms to run their adult evening general interest programs. Why does continuing education need to pay to use facilities owned by the TDSB? If they didn't need to, perhaps the deficit would be lower. Um, Stacy, I'll throw this to you, but I I guess there there are costs incurred when we keep a building open, whether it be caretaking to be in the building. So there are some costs incurred by having a a permit or whatever operating in the evening?
Uh, that's correct. So um continuing education, uh especially the general interest courses, there are um again, costs associated with running the program, whether it's the materials, whether it's using the utilities, the space, that sort of thing. And we would not incur those costs if those class weren't running. So it is really meant to be a cost recovery basis, meaning that in general, the cost of running those programs if is higher for TDSB than if we didn't run the programs. So that's all that it is. Sometimes it's a it's a way of um, we're not necessarily paying ourselves, we're incurring more costs as a board as a whole. And those costs are being attributed to continuing education because those are, that's who's using the space and incurring those extra costs.
Okay, again, I'm just checking uh looking, there is one question here. Uh, did this person, I understand correctly, that at this time, there is an inability to close schools that are underpopulated. Why is that? What is the current cost of continuing to operate the schools that fall within this category? Stacy, do you want to speak to the moratorium that's currently in place?
Sure. So um it was quite a number of years ago where the province um instituted a moratorium, meaning that under regulation, we are not allowed to um close schools. And we continue to advocate for uh uh at least TDSB to be able to deal with some of their their excess capacity. Um, we are looking at and we will be providing um uh through the continued budget process about what the average operating costs for an elementary school and secondary school are, just so we can have that information uh available and provided. So, you know, if we were able to close this many schools, it would save us this much money. And so that is the the work that we're doing right now using our um most current information. And we will be providing that information through the budget process.
Okay, thank you for that. Looking at our question queue, I'm just looking to see if we have any further questions. Uh, do we have this information? Is it true that there are less individuals applying to ECE and teacher positions and therefore there are some schools that are understaffed in these areas? Craig or Stacy, I think that the issue right now as far as uh occasional staff picking up the open jobs, is that fair to say?
I I think there's a number of reasons why we don't have all of the positions filled on a daily basis, or we have um unfilled positions, as we would say. And I would, I I'm not sure about the the numbers. I know that the ministry is working um also to try to increase the number of graduates that we have from those programs and doing what they can do. And we're also um trying to do the work that we can to make sure that uh the occasional teachers that we have on hand are able um to to pick up the work that that is available for them on a daily basis.
That's great. Thank you so much uh for all of your questions. We have been able to answer all of them that have been asked this afternoon. Really appreciate you joining us for the second of two TSB virtual budget town hall meetings to discuss the twenty four twenty five budget. If you missed any of this afternoon's town hall, we are recording this and we'll post to the TSB website shortly, along with the one from last night. Throughout this year's budget process, the TSB website, again, such a great resource for more information, tdsb dot O N dot C A slash budget. There you'll find more information on the budget process, links to board reports for the budget, which go through our uh finance, budget and enrollment committee. You'll also see more information on how you can have your say from these virtual town hall meetings, how to delegate before committees. And in the coming days, a budget survey to gather feedback from our school communities. Again, that's tdsb dot O N dot C A slash budget. It will be updated throughout the budget process. Finally, on behalf of Stacy, Craig and myself, our thanks to Stacy Lewis, Ronnie, Sri and Rajini for their help behind the scenes this afternoon for making today possible. Thank you so much for joining us again this afternoon and have a great day.